But we will, public is certainly welcome to be here. So the workshops are intended to have all the city staff present their budget in terms of what they're proposing. A chance for the council to hear that presentation, to ask questions, to become familiar with the process, and for the public, for the public to hear what's being proposed and to participate in the process. Certainly reach out to any member of the council with your questions or your comments. If you have questions about, specific for city staff, then certainly direct that to the city. As far as the workshops go, the way we'll manage is like all workshops that we operate, it's intended to get information out more than anything for the council. We will provide, if the public is here, to individuals will have three minutes to speak, and we'll save that for the end so that they can hear the entire budget, in case they have specific questions or comments, or that section of the budget, I should say, so that they can respond to that if they choose. What we won't do is, we won't open it up so that it becomes a debate back and forth that becomes unwieldy, so that can happen outside of the workshop session. In the workshops, we don't take any votes. There are no votes that are being taken by the council, so the public isn't going to miss out on an opportunity to advocate for their position. We take the vote when it's presented at a council meeting, and that will be posted, and everyone will know when that takes place. We've changed the schedule a bit this year in terms of trying to have more sessions early to leave a lot of time before we have to vote on the budget, before the new fiscal year, to give the council time to have more discussion and dialogue, to give the community time to participate. So these sessions will happen frequently. We have tonight's session, 3:27, 3:30, 4:30, 4:06, 4:13, and then anything else that gets scheduled from there. We also have a capital committee meeting that's obviously related to the workshops on 3:29. So we have a lot of meetings coming up, basically two a week, and council members will attend as many as they can, but everybody, you know, we all have conflicts, and they will certainly get up to speed as things move forward. So I guess with that, I will turn it over to, well, first, let me just ask, do either one of you have any questions or comments you want to make before in terms of the process?
I'm good.
I'll be listening, and I'm sure I'll have some questions later.
Yeah, so from a staff perspective, certainly mine and finance, you know, our goal out of these workshops is to get some, you know, hopefully get some feedback and get some insight into what the council is thinking about individual department budgets and the budget as a whole. The product that you have in front of you is far from a finished product. Just today alone, we've identified changes that need to be made before these even, you know, these sessions start, have started. So I expect that in a month or more from now, when we're looking at a final vote on an actual budget, it's going to be significantly different than what we're looking at today. So this is a good starting point. We have been working since Jan, late January, when we first got budgets from staff, and myself, and Tony, and Anne from the finance department have gone through the individual department budgets, and we went through and did some comparison with historic spending within those departments, looked at current spending, and then made some recommended cuts. When we made cuts, we brought those individual departments, department heads in with us. We discussed the cuts that we were suggesting or recommending, gave them an opportunity to kind of change our mind, if you will, and then after all of those meetings were completed, we sat down and went through and made our final, final decisions, if you will, on the budget proposals that we were going to be putting together. So that's the result of the product that you have in front of you today. Some of the items in there, like the, were not decisions that we made, the REIT committee made recommendations, and we didn't touch those. We also didn't do anything to the library budget, because that budget comes from the library trustees, so we left that budget intact. We also, outside entities, any of the outside entities, like outside of the REIT committee for social services and others that have requested funds, we just put forward those requests. We didn't, you know, we didn't do anything to those requests, just put them forward as is. So those are decisions that ultimately, at some point during this process, will have to be made by the council. So tonight's budgets are, we, so we've broken down the cities throughout the different departments into different nights. Tonight's group that we're going to be talking about is the admin staff, so you can see them here. When I say admin, that's the folks essentially who work in this building, the different departments that are located in this building, outside of police and fire and public works, which are larger and require days all of their own. So the admin staff in this building, most, all of which are here tonight, with the exception of Jana Richards, who's lucky, her on vacation, so she's going to present her budget to you all later in the session. I think she's going to go with the REIT committee and outside entities. I think she's going to jump on that, that budget workshop for hers. But everyone else, I believe, is here tonight, and will be prepared to talk to you about their budgets and what they've proposed, what they've put forward. And we can jump right in with the legislative, which is a budget that consumes the salaries for the counselors, printing and advertisement, conference meetings and miscellaneous expenses. Conference and meetings would cover the training sessions through MMA for new counselors when they come on, and additional trainings, if there are some that come along that folks are interested in. Printing and advertising is for the meetings, the posting of the meetings.
And if I may chime in on that, Manager Moser, the communications committee that's been meeting to discuss better communications for the city wanted to propose increasing that line, so you'll see that that's an increase. And the increases that were made were 1,500, just because of the current pricing is higher than it's been in the past, and then an additional 5,200 for some increased publications that the communications committee felt might be appropriate in the coming year.
Have just, everyone's got the right section, so?
This is section four, and this is the second page in that section.
So you provide, there's a summary page, and then behind the summary page, there's
If there's a narrative and explanation, yeah.
That's how those are organized.
And some don't have a narrative, but if they do, they're behind the cover.
Any questions on that? Okay, so we'll move right along to the city manager's budget. So that's my office, which also encompasses human resources. So if you look at the payroll, already there will be a change made to reflect my pay increase that was voted on last meeting, so that needs to be adjusted in there. And slight decrease in the admin assistant salary, because that was, is being slightly adjusted based on the new hire, and human resources is remaining the same in payroll. If you go down through the rest, the remainder of the budget, there really is not much of any change. Slight increase to the office supplies line item, and that's simply a reflection of the new admin assistant who will be doing work as a communication specialist, so there's a belief that she's probably going to need some additional office supplies that the previous admin assistant didn't have a need for with the change in that role. And you look down through the remainder of it, it's all basically flat funded, with the exception of conference and meetings, and we reduce the miscellaneous expenses slightly. If you hear nothing, can I just keep going? All right, we'll keep, we'll go right along. Next is human resources, and Carrie unfortunately is out, but her, there is no increase in her budget request, and her budget request is pretty simple. The events covers the employee picnic, as well as the employee holiday party, and supplies and job notices. Obviously, whenever we have a vacancy within the city, she, she's responsible for posting those and getting, and putting that word out to fill those vacancies, so that's what that amount covers. And, oh. I just, just a comment to anybody who's listening, we apologize for, I know that it's probably very annoying hearing the paper turning, it's impossible to avoid it, so sorry about that. Next budget up is city clerk, so I'll turn that over to Tony Dyer, she can.
Yeah, so you'll see there is a 28% increase in the city clerk budget this year. The training has increased, we have three of us in there, and all of our state certifications are needing to be redone this year, so that'll mean increased number of classes to maintain that certification in the coming year. And in addition, I am, we have some union salaries built in, and so there's built-in increases to salary that are unavoidable in that salary line. And my deputy city clerk is also the city's GA administrator, and since COVID, her caseload has continued to increase substantially, limiting her time that's available for the clerk's office. So later tonight, when she presents her GA budget, you'll see that she's proposing becoming fully funded out of the GA budget. And so I'm proposing adding a position into my department to cover the loss of her needing to maintain the citizens' needs for general assistance for the city. So that accounts for the additional difference in my payroll line.
Yeah, and I would just add to that, it's not really, I mean, we're not really adding a position, we're replacing. So the current setup in the clerk's department is, Tony is the city clerk, and then we have two deputies, both of whom are split. So Tina is GA, which has been stated, and she'll get into much more detail when she presents, is, you know, was, you know, originally do clerk work and GA. Now GA has really, has really become what she does every day, all day, and has really limited her capacity to, you know, to do the clerk duties that are required of that position. Marcia Monk is the other employee who works in the clerk's office, deputy clerk, and she splits her time between the highway department and the water department, doing administrative work for them. So with the two of them being split, and Tina being highly, you know, highly needed for the GA stuff, the need has really presented itself to have one dedicated deputy clerk who can assist Tony with, you know, business licensing and the scheduling of meetings, council meetings, agenda, minutes, and all of the things that, elections, all of the things that she does as the clerk, so. And again, we'll get into more detail with that. Do you have other budgets in here too, Tony, I think?
Oh, I have lots, yeah.
So you want to just move right on to the next one, elections?
The next one is elections. So the narrative on there, the first line item, it's one that is landscape in your packet, is for the November election, and I break out the payroll required for all the election workers, including some payroll. We bring some folks in a few weeks before the election to help with absentee processing. We do about 4,000 absentee ballots, so it takes a lot of time. Then we budget for the June primary for June of 2024, and we have our own election supplies, election training, and then we do rent the tabulator machines, and we rent the church and York Place Community Center for awards two and three. And all of, so the rental fees for the two locations have gone up about 10% this year each, from 175 to 205. They have not had an increase in their rental fees for several years. And I am anticipating an increase in the programming line, which is for the machines to tabulate the votes. I haven't seen anything official from the state, but they usually do go up, so I kind of built in what I think is a reasonable increase of that. So my election line, slight increase of $3,600. And as a side note on your sheet, I've included the cost of the special election, which we do not budget for, so any additional elections outside of November and June, we don't have any sort of contingency for.
So that could happen, for example, if we don't end up moving the school budget along out of, beyond the council, and it doesn't get to the voters, that could hold it up and that would force a special election. Yeah, or if it got to the voters and failed.
And failed, we had to do it a second time.
Run a second election, so.
Or, you know, any recounts, anything like that, those are costs that we just can't, I can't estimate, because some years it happens and some years it doesn't.
Next department is finance. You guys can attack team number?
All right, so one of the things that I want to do with my department is I want to add at least one accountant, credentialed degree accountant. I see there's a huge need for it in the city, and definitely in my department. That's all I've done since I've been here, is accounting, and I am not an accountant, and so I recognize this need. Secondly, I'd like to recommend that we have, and actually Tony and I have talked about this more, but add a position, I don't think it's another person, I think possibly someone that's already in management can do it, but we need like an operations person. This enterprise is big enough to where there's a lot of functional silos, in terms of people not knowing what other people are doing, and we have a problem with implementing policy because the left hand doesn't always know what the right hand is doing, because we're big. So I'd like to see that. I also, one of the things that I, I think my training, I may raise my training, because if I have an accountant, I would like for them to get a municipal credential for municipal accounting, similar to a CPA, but specifically for municipal accounting, because it's significantly different than just regular GA accounting. Right now, I'm happy with my two clerks who do AP for me, among other things, and they do deputy treasury kind of stuff, office equipment and maintenance. I actually probably am going to need a printer in there. We have an old Workhorse printer.
Right there.
Huh?
It's not a right there.
I need something that can take a beating. And a lot of this, okay, you go, because I know you did a big part of this.
Okay, so the finance budget is, our tax collector is her own department head, but all of her funding actually comes out of this budget also. So you kind of have to see it as two while it's on one sheet. So the payroll and all the supplies and training actually covers the finance office, which has four positions, and then the tax office, which has three positions. So within that payroll line, there are two unionized positions, so those come with built-in union increases, which I've included in this budget. Membership to tax collector and treasurer associations are in the membership and dues line. The professional services is for our auditing annually, and we're currently in the professional services, you see there's an increase this year, so that we can outsource our payroll. We're doing payroll in-house, actually, I'm doing payroll, which is not technically a city clerk function, but we don't have the staff to do it in-house, and to hire another person just to do the city's payroll is far more substantial than $18,500.
And the liability.
And the liability for payroll inaccuracies, W-2 reporting, federal 941s. So that is part of that increase in that line.
Is the $18,500 budget, is that, did you, have you talked with vendors? Because that seems low.
We have, actually, so we have a software committee in-house that we've been using to look at our municipal software. And so we got quotes from three companies, First National Bank quoted us, Bank where savings has a payroll program, and then Paychex. And Paychex was the lowest, and they're also the largest, and that's all they do. They're not in banking, they're not in any other field, and we did a demo this week, actually, with them and our whole management team, going over their timekeeping system and their payroll options, and it seems pretty well-received, easy to use. They have experience with the oddities that come with police and fire payrolls, because they have, you know, 24-hour shifts and differentials and all these potential, you know, non-standard nine-to-five entries, so that's the recommendation of the software committee.
Is it, is it customized in terms of, do you work with them, and then they customize their product to fit?
Yeah, so if you were to approve the budget and include the outsourcing of payroll, once we start our implementation, they would make everything exactly how we need it, they'll build the differentials for every shift that we need, and everything is done by them. Employees will be able, if we allow, and we can use geo-fencing to clock in and out from phones. One person here just has to hit the final submit button for them to get it and finalize it, and that can be done from a phone. So if someone that does that is on vacation, they can just, you know, hit send. Employees have a chance to view their pay stub and actually select a button that is not correct and report an issue, or confirm that it's correct. If they take no action, it will assume it's correct and send it along. So I mean, it seemed to be a pretty.
Employees can access their own W-2s when needed, they can go in and change their direct deposits if needed. A lot of those are functions now of HR, where, you know, employees are sending requests to HR, and she's having to stop what she's doing in order to accommodate those requests. So there's a lot of built-in efficiency with outsourcing the payroll, and particularly what, large reason why we were leaning to, because of the difficult nature of some of our departments and their pay, was why we were really leaning towards Paychex, which is, again, that's all they do is payroll, and. So is the $18,500, is that the licensing fee for, is that the annual cost?
So that's the first year, and I think it includes, I think it was 3,200 for like the first year implementation, so it actually will go down in years two and beyond.
So it includes the cost of the customization and everything, it's all kind of built in? And, and training, because that was one of the big things, because we, the city purchased Time Clock Plus several years ago, before I was in the city manager position, and it's never, we've come a long way in implementation of it in the last two years, but there was never any, there was never adequate training. The system was purchased, and then we were kind of left to our own devices to build it, and to build the employee pay rates and all of that into the system. It's never worked well with UNIS, and it's just been problematic, and, and so this, you know, this is a step towards rectifying that situation and getting our payroll outsourced, so we're no longer responsible for fines to the IRS for errors made in WT filings and.
And it's, we're lucky to be able to integrate with our financial software, so that's huge too. There's a lot of errors, just random accounting style errors, so again, takes that liability off of us.
So let me ask you the big question. So you have staff now who are involved in that, and they're spending whatever amount of time, which sounds like is a big task, and focused on that. That time gets removed, and it goes to this product, and alleviates that. What happens with that position? What's your, what are your thoughts about now you have this, I'm just making up a number. So let's say it's 20 hours a week that somebody spends now with payroll. What are you envisioning now for that employee that's spending the 20 hours doing that?
Well, it's, I'm only payroll, so for me, between assisting in finance still through transition, my own department, where I have two shared deputy clerks, my time is incredibly valuable, and I have thankfully been able to let my deputies kind of run the clerk's department with their other tasks while I'm in this transition phase, assisting HR transition last year, and then into finance. So with my time freed up from payroll, it'll allow me to focus on the clerk's department. We have a lot of records that need sorting, proper filing, our record retention logs are out of date, we have a safe full of things that can transition out to long-term storage, and just get the clerk's department back on track, because it's been a back burner for me.
So you've been the one doing the payroll? You, that's the person that I'm talking to?
Yes.
Yeah, she did pay, so when Tony was in HR, payroll was in HR, which I never really felt was an appropriate place for payroll. Tony had the capacity while she was there, she was, she inherited it. When she took that position, it was always our goal to get it into the finance department, or my goal, to get it into the finance department. And so when Tony moved out of HR into the clerk's position, payroll went with her, and, because HR's got far too much responsibility to be doing payroll. Now, she still does some functions of payroll, she does the benefits and those type of things, so she's still involved in payroll. And outsourcing payroll's not going to alleviate any time from employees, so it's gonna, it's still going to require one to two people to be responsible on a weekly basis to verify the payroll and send it out. Department heads are going to have to take more responsibility for the payroll, because it's going to, the expectation will be that when it comes from the department head, it's been verified and it's, it's accurate and correct. But there's still going to be probably HR at this point with a backup of someone in the building, or two, still there's redundancy in the event that that person's not available, who will be familiar with the exporting, you know, responsibilities, and, and so it won't free up that time entirely, but certainly the time that, in your 20 hours, is relatively accurate. The time that Tony has spent on payroll in order to get it completed is certainly time that she can, you know, be well-spent within the confines of the clerk department, to free her up. But I do want to make, I do want to just kind of clear up one thing. So what Anne was speaking about in her position, so the priority, the focus right now is an accountant, getting an accountant on staff. We don't, there's no plans to add a position or anything like that, so I just want to make sure that this, this operations person is just a concept that we're talking about, how, how is that role best filled, whether it be Anne in her capacity, or eventually if the accountant person has capacity to take on more of a, a operations type of role. What that looks like, we're not really clear on, but right now, the focus is on that accountant piece, in order to get that situation and that, that piece of, of the finance department more stable.
There's enough accounting work to warrant.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
That's almost, it's a huge part of the job. I mean, I'll still have to be doing accounting, but there's no way one person can do it all. It's a very heavy accounting position in finance, because there's a lot of accounting to do.
And there's so much, it doesn't make sense to outsource it, like payroll?
Yeah, no, payroll, just from this, it's going to pay for itself in IRS fines. It's, it shouldn't be in. It shouldn't be, and no one has it in-house anymore for payroll. And as far as accounting goes, just looking back over the books, over the years, it, the city needs an accountant, a real credentialed accountant, you know, I mean, we just do, for a number of reasons, not only just for regular daily accounting functions and finance functions, but budget too, you know? And that person will be more helpful to the department heads in teaching them how to do a budget and create a template that's universal so everyone's kind of on the same page, which is why we had the idea about having someone to do an operations piece to kind of pull everyone together, because that doesn't exist right now. And I think it would make us a lot more efficient, which is always good for the bottom line.
Just jump in.
I'm not against anything that you've said, but I would like to define the word accountant. Are we talking a certified public accountant, or are we talking somebody that has an accounting degree that is not certified?
I want somebody that has an accounting degree, that has experience doing municipal accounting, and will work towards the credential of a municipal accountant, which is parallel to a CPA, but specifically related to government accounting, which is different. It's, you know, it's Gatsby and it's-
Well, I don't know, but I, I get where you're coming from.
Yeah, I mean, it's fund accounting, so in business, as you know, we work for profit. In government accounting, your focus is service and getting the most out of your resources to provide service to the community. So that involves fund accounting and keeping a really good, and of course, the fiduciary obligation of it, and that's what that needs. I don't think a bookkeeper is sufficient. I want someone that has that actual credential.
So I'm hearing that you're looking for an accounting degree, not necessarily a certified public accountant, or the equivalent?
I'd like to have that, but I think it's cost prohibitive if you know what those people make.
I just wondered the definition of an accountant, because that means a lot of different things to a lot of people.
Yeah, I want to grow my own credentialed accountant, get them licensed for municipal accounting, and go forward with that. I think it's critical to the city. Just, I've been here just a couple of months and it's-
Well, you inherited a disaster, so-
Well, I would like to prevent there from ever being a disaster again, and that involves having good financial policy.
And to be, to be clear about my words, I think, I think there's been many people that have inherited this disaster, including you, you inherited a disaster, so, thank you, I just wondered what-
Yeah, I mean-
The word accountant means a lot of different things to a lot of people.
It's what you think.
Okay.
So, yeah, I want someone with a credential and experience that's actually been an accountant and not a bookkeeper. It's not that bookkeepers aren't important, but it's not the same thing. I need someone that knows how to do the reporting part of accounting.
Thank you.
And the closing.
There's also, when we talk about the timekeeping, we also pay, and I don't know what that dollar is, and Jace can probably tell us when he comes in, but there is an annual amount that we pay for Time Clock Plus that will go away if, particularly if we go with this particular company, because they have their own timekeeping that's, that appears to be more robust than what Time Clock Plus offers, so there's some savings there.
Do you know, is that on a month-to-month?
It's annual.
Annual.
So it'll be a year before you can, or whenever it runs out? I don't know.
I think it runs out in the fall, actually.
So there's a potential to-
Yeah.
Transition away from that?
Hopefully. Any other questions on the finance department? Seena, Larry, you're up.
Good evening. Larry Vargas, senior sergeant. And let's see, it's the proposed budget has every line item the same except for the top one, and that's for payroll. And I don't believe I submitted an increase.
Right, and he has an employee that's unionized, so there's a built-in unit increase, plus over last year's budget, we all had COLA increases, so that increased Larry's salary, so those are the only two changes in the salary.
COLA?
Larry's cost of living, and then his union employee has a built-in July one.
The union increases are every year or biannual or?
It depends, some have done biannual years, but most are right now, I think, on annual cycle.
Yeah, we don't have any biannual, they're all annual increases. But the contracts are three-year contracts, so like this coming fiscal year, we have police, I mean, fire and highway and clerks, no, water, wastewater.
The contracts stagger.
And then next year, we'll have police and clerks again.
And I might add that I saw the first budget line item of all the departments, and I think a big chunk of that increase for all administration is in benefits. A huge, huge increase. But all the other items are the same as last year's.
Don't leave. The question that I asked, and I know you're already with assessing and all of that.
I told him to be ready.
Yeah. You know what I'm going to ask, because it's, I don't even have to ask you, you could just answer the question in terms of-
Let me guess, will there be an increase in value this year?
Just, yeah, what do you see in terms of the market? Because that is one of those complicating factors that it can drive different directions and-
Yeah, I might start off by just saying that if the budget stays the same, it wouldn't matter if the budget, and if we adjusted across the board to everyone the same, no one's tax would increase. But what I'm looking at, you know, for, as everyone has seen the real estate market just go crazy the last couple of years, it was looking at close to twenty percent increases in average market values for almost two years in a row. It has slowed down a lot, but we're not seeing, we're not seeing any decreases in what people's values are. So we're, we're not currently, I haven't seen anything that would indicate people are underwater with mortgages. What I do see is, well, we have a state law that says the city's assessment-to-sale-price ratio needs to be above ninety percent, or if it's not, we have to adjust our exemptions, the homestead exemptions and veterans exemptions by whatever that ratio is. So my job primarily is to keep that ratio above ninety percent, and it's looking at this point that that's probably around five percent increase in total value, which is certainly not significant, but it, you know, it's, and who knows what the real estate market will continue to do? I've been reading both sides, people are saying, well, it's going to get worse, some are saying, no, it's going to get a little bit better, so it's hard to predict that kind of thing. But right now, I'm looking at probably about a five percent increase in value versus last year's total value.
Thank you. Which I just wanted to add, hasn't, there has been no value adjustment in the figures that you see, so what we presented is based on present evaluation.
Yeah, which is really good to do, because you just never can tell what the, in years past, this is almost ancient now, but a lot of towns would keep their tax rate exactly the same year after year after year, and how they would do that is just adjust the assessed values, and a lot of the smaller towns especially, they would do that. So whatever the budget was, the selectmen are also the assessors, so we need to keep the tax rate at thirteen point seven, so let's, we need to increase the values on everyone by three or four, or five or six percent. But we don't look at it that way, just whatever the tax rate is, is, it's hardly ever the same every year anymore.
Thank you very much.
Code enforcement.
Laurie. I'm going to start with the narrative, I'm not sure which page you have, the narrative, and you can keep maybe the income available to look at too. So the narrative, start out with my pay is paying me through May of next year when I retire. And then what I would suggest doing is hiring a code enforcement officer to replace me and work with me as of November of this year. So he'd have, he or she would have five or six months with me to train. And my buyout, I have to budget for my buyout, which is my paid leave that I have in the bank. So that is the twenty-seven-five. And then my deputy code officer, I would like to have her get two certifications as of July first of this year, and one in alcohol serve safe, she's already certified in food serve safe, because she does the inspections annually for the restaurants and bars, and then becoming certified in stormwater, and that will help her, you know, as I leave with new projects in delineating stormwater and understanding stormwater better, because she can inspect the systems. So that would bring her up to forty-eight thousand eight hundred, and that's without giving anybody any, like a COLA increase or anything like that, that's just my pay until May of next year, and hers. And then the code enforcement officer, I've estimated at thirty-five thousand dollars for a six-month term, being from November to, November until June thirtieth of the following. And then my office supplies went up two hundred dollars for paperwork, and I do have to buy some annual, not annual, every three years, the codes are adopted and I have to buy the new international codes, the new plumbing codes, those sorts of books, and they're very expensive. And I would probably split that with some a little of the professional services too, but most of it would come out of office supplies. Travel expense, we need to continue to keep our certifications up, and at that time, you know, by November, we'll have three code officers there, and in, even in July, we will have some other trainings that we might have to travel for and have a hotel room, and we do have a code car, so we'd be able to take the code car with us. And then the other code officers would rely on their personal vehicles. And that would also include mileage reimbursement in there too. And again, the training, most of the state, the state offers most of our recertification training on the main building and energy code, plumbing and health officer, mechanical and code enforcement for shoreline zoning and legal issues, but I'd like to keep this line item funded for associates, fees associated with certified stormwater inspector certification, and additional fees charged by outside state-funded entities for additional code training, testing and recertification. Conferences and meetings to cover the cost of conferences, the, maybe of interest to the department relating to code education. Professional services, the, I have a commercial electrical inspector, Irela Page, that will be doing electrical inspections for not only Jackson Lab, but the solar projects that we have coming. I have two that I'm anticipating, one is coming this year and one will be coming next, well, fiscal year. And then he also does various commercial projects during the year, and then now I am budgeting now, which we've never budgeted for before, is legal services for the abandoned homes and current violations. I have a vehicle, and I've outlined, you know, what the cost of the vehicle for the year. I'll be in uniforms, be fitting the new CEO with new uniforms in November, and then just replacement of clothing during the year for Bobby and I. Another item that we have to think about too is we are going to be getting new software. Casell is offering a code enforcement software that we will have to be trained on, and that takes time, you know, time away from inspections and issuing permits and things like that, because it's time-consuming to learn a whole new system, you know, to issue permits and things like that. So that is that.
I have a accounting question. So with vested time, are, is vested time, do you have a separate line item where you accrue on a monthly basis that time?
It's a liability, prepaid liability.
So, and that's budgeted based on what employees are earning? So is that where this is?
It's actually a, it's actually a net position item, like a balance sheet item, so.
But I think your question, Dale, it's not earned, time is front-loaded. So at your anniversary date, you say you have points for two-hundred-and-ten hours of vacation time, as of your anniversary date, you get that two-hundred-and-ten hours of vacation time?
So, but it's vested, it's, so when it's used, you use that against that bank?
It's a cafeteria plan, so there's not vesting. You actually like kind of pay for it upfront, so that's what I think he's saying.
Yeah, and you, and according to the ordinance, you can bank up to four-hundred-and-eighty hours, and that's the max, so that's the most that you can, you can carry at one time, is the forty.
Yeah, I was thinking in terms of relation to-
It's a liability.
Where there's a payout.
Yeah.
And you're budgeting for that in the salary line, but you don't do that for an annual, somebody, that doesn't show up in the salary line, right?
No.
No, but it does accumulate as about, like a balance sheet item, as a long-term liability, just like pensions.
So would this need to be budgeted as a additional salary?
I don't know, I can get back to you on that question. I'm not sure how they account for it now, because I haven't seen full financials yet.
I'm just curious in terms of-
I am actually now too, now that you brought it up. But I'll get back to you with a good, a good answer that everyone will be on the same page.
The new CEO, that six months, is there a difference in salary for training periods, or is that not done?
Typically, we would have to hire- Typically, we would have to hire somebody that had experience of some sorts. And so either they've worked in other towns or they've, you know, had the experience. Now, you can hire people that don't have experience and they have a year to gain their certifications through the state. So that's a possibility also. But that's basically thirty-five thousand dollars is basically half of a year's salary for a code enforcement officer. It may be a little bit higher because I don't make that yet. I don't make seventy thousand.
Where are you going in retirement?
I am going to have fun.
Well earned.
Any other questions for code enforcement?
Laurie has a pull-out sheet in there that just shows her revenue, anticipated revenue for the year.
Yes, and that includes also, when Dwight was here, he looked at solar projects as basically just getting an electrical permit for the electrical work that was done there. And in our ordinance, a, my interpretation, a structure is affixed to the ground. And so that is basically the solar panels. And from January of twenty-twenty-two, we had a new policy going in that we will be charging for the arrays, the square footage of the arrays at twenty cents a square feet.
For building permit?
Yes. And I'm looking at a forty-eight thousand dollar building permit coming in for the Nicole and Rue project.
Thank you, Laurie. Next up is the planning department.
And there's a typo in your book, the FY twenty-three column should say FY twenty-four. It's all correct.
Since you'd all come up with one?
Yeah, the numbers are correct below it, the dollar figure is just the, the year. I wanted to rewind.
It was late.
It was late.
Are they all off by a year?
No, just this one.
And my budget stays essentially the same as this past year. I just shifted where the funds were around a little bit. So you'll see there's a decrease in salaries slightly just due to the change in personnel. Printing and advertising increases significantly. I broke it down for the twelve months of planning board, there's about a two-hundred-and-eighty dollar cost to post in the newspaper per month. And I include two extra possible months, just in case there's a special meeting, a site visit, a workshop, something like that. And then for the comprehensive plan, this number, I tried to equate it to public postings in the paper, but it honestly could be more if the steering committee wants to go beyond what the consultants is doing. It gives them some funds to produce more public notice for a particular meeting. So that could be two specialized postings in the newspaper that's bigger and not in the legal ads section. And that included a two-hundred-dollar increase for other tools, such as if there's a Facebook post we want to boost, using the funds for something like that. And so that brings it to a total from five thousand this year to six thousand six hundred forty, which is where there's a typo in the change from FY twenty-three. It should say sixteen forty, not fourteen forty, which is a thirty-two-point-eight percent change, not a twenty-eight-point-eight percent change. And then again, office supplies, I decreased that by four hundred dollars, like at the six hundred dollar amount because for the plotter upstairs, the prints are plan sheets, the large plan sheets, to get ink and paper for that, it's around like four hundred dollars right now. So that'll be most of that cost and two hundred dollars for other office supplies, general office supplies. Travel and auto, I decreased that by four hundred dollars as well. I mean, I might not even use that, so I just decrease it to see what happens in the next year if I need to decrease it further again. But there's only one conference I think I'd be going to and I will probably be driving, so that's probably where the bulk of that cost will be from. Due to memberships, I decreased that and I outlined the association or membership fees that we pay for the American Planning Association, Hancock County Planning Commission, and then as a different, the Ellsworth American, the check for public notice postings. And for conferences and meetings, I decreased that by four hundred dollars as well. It's mostly for trainings for staff and board, planning board members. Every year, there's usually a couple of MMA trainings that they like to go to or are interested in going to, and so that covers those costs. Professional services, I also increased this because this past budget cycle, we had the solar consultant that both the planning board and the city council used that wasn't a budgeted item. So I kind of had to spread it around throughout the rest of the budget. But just a slight increase here just gives me more options if I do have to hire a consultant again. I can try and keep it where it belongs in the line item. And then after last year, there's no more comprehensive plan, line item, since that's fully funded.
Any questions?
The, the dues and membership, you're listing the ones that you continue to hold or these are the ones that were dropped? Or which ones were dropped then?
I actually don't know which ones were dropped, that twenty-three-hundred number from this past fiscal year. I couldn't find how that got to that point, so I just listed the ones that I'll continue into next fiscal year.
That was much shorter than Monday night. Next up is legal services and you can look, hasn't really changed significantly. I did, I have asked planning specifically, I mean code enforcement specifically to kind of forecast what some legal expenses they may have because obviously I, I don't know what those would be. So, and ask them to budget some funds this year for their own legal expenses, planning as well, a little bit. But we do have additional funds for, as you can see, easements, ordinances, planning and code. So if they utilize all of their funds, we have other funds available. Or if there's something that's, that comes up that perhaps myself or the council requests legal advice on or legal consultation, then it would come out of here as opposed to their individual budgets. And then labor negotiations, we do, as I stated, we will have in this time next year, we will be starting in on two negotiations, three negotiations, so. And then administrative is just legal fees that I need to utilize for, again, requests from the council and other different legal matters that come up, consultations for, for a whole host of reasons. Personnel is for HR predominantly, but consultation, for different consultations, dealing with discipline if necessary or other personnel matters that come up, that seem to pop up, so.
So just, unless other counselors feel it's important, if, if your staff have presented and we don't have any more questions, I know that they've been here all day and that busy, that I don't have an issue if they leave. Do we need them here for anything more?
You don't have to tell Laurie twice.
And as long as you don't mind, I don't want to step on it.
No, no, that's fine.
Look at that. You could wait till I finish my sentence, but that's all right.
Economic development is going to?
We're going to be skipping over it. We're on technology next, which Jason will probably hear us and come running.
Look at you.
No, no run?
There it goes. Switchcraft.
Good evening. I don't have any major changes in this budget this year. The biggest differential note is in my service contracts. There's a fifty-eight thousand dollar increase there and that is primarily to do with carrying approximately fifty thousand dollars to license Munis for an additional year. There's a good likelihood we won't need to spend that money because I believe Casell will be online by then. But it's, it's a large enough amount of money, I didn't feel comfortable not having it in case we did need it. So likely we won't need to spend it, but I didn't want to take that chance. So overall, that's, I asked for a little bit more of my training. We have several big projects and changes coming this year, so I wanted to make sure we covered there. But otherwise, it's pretty much status quo.
Could you say that one more time about Munis or we're going to replace it with a different software?
So, yeah, so we've already purchased Trio and Casell to replace Munis. We're already live on the Trio software and we're currently implementation phase on Casell. I believe we're on track at this time to be off of Munis and into Casell before our current license runs out. But I just didn't want to take that chance if we don't make it and have, be stuck with a fifty thousand dollar unbudgeted expense. So I, I believe we'll make it and won't need to spend it, but, and if we don't, it'll carry forward or however we, we can, we can encumber it, carry it forward, whatever, however that works, but.
And the Trio, Casell are much cheaper services or?
They will be, yes, the, the annual maintenance on those two combined was less than the maintenance we paid on just Munis. So there is a savings there, but we just have to get fully implemented before we can fully realize it.
So what, what's, is it January? Was that the date?
October.
October.
We're licensed through October. And we're, we're well along, we're up, we're up, we're well on the way at this point with implementation. They have our data, they're doing the conversion, so I, I think we can make it. So I, I'm not too worried, but.
So can I, I just say, is, could you, just a request of just have some more discussions as we go through the budgeting in terms of the likelihood of doing that? And the reason I say that is that if there's a fifty thousand dollar issue, if we put it in the budget, it becomes part of the taxpayers pay for it. And yes, down the road, it gets pushed forward and then maybe we don't need fifty thousand next year, but it still impacts this year. So if there's a real high likelihood of this being successful and not needing it, I think it would be better not to budget for it and, and, you know, but you know that better than I, that's why I said having some more thought, more discussion, to be able to say, yeah, do we think we can do it? And, and kind of go from there because I, I think, I'm not going to speak, I'll speak for myself, I'd rather as a person sitting on the council, be in a position of saying, well, if we didn't make it because of these factors, we're going to have to find fifty thousand dollars more where we do that versus if you think you can do it and then we put the burden on taxpayers. It's, it's an area that we could achieve fifty thousand dollars, which is not insignificant.
I, I'm, I'm fine with that and I think we'll know if we get into April or May before you vote on this, we might have a better feel. Right now, the only reason I'm uncomfortable is because we're moving at the speed of Casell, so it's not really something we're controlling at this point. So if it was something I knew we had full control of, I'd feel better giving you a more firm answer.
And I appreciate it.
Yes.
From the time that it was agreed that we purchased Casell?
Yeah.
I think maybe this may play into where you're at. Do you feel that the conversion is on schedule or behind schedule from their salesmanship?
I think we're behind schedule, but I think that's more on the fact that we lost Josh when he left and that set us off, that took us off course to be fully implement. I think I'd have no doubt, we'd be implemented July one for certain if we hadn't had that delay in the, in the personnel change.
So you think the delay was more on our end than being oversold by the program?
Yeah, no, Casell's, Casell's been great to work with and I don't, I don't want to make it sound like they've done anything wrong.
Okay.
They have a lot of new customers and we're just in their queue, so they've, they've been great to work with. There's been no issue with that.
So any thing that's off a little bit from what we had planned is, is on our end?
Yeah, it's really just that, that was a big, you know, the Josh left and we were kind of ready to go and then we stopped. So now we're going again, so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Kobe. Next one is the Kobe budget, which is our community-owned broadband infrastructure, AKA the city-owned fiber network. These charges, these, these expenses cover the operation of that network, which includes licensing fees from the utilities to attach to their poles, electricity to power the pad end equipment, and random building maintenance, things like that. You know, the heat pumps need to be serviced and all that kind of good stuff. And we also have an insurance, fairly hefty insurance bill, the liability policy that we're required to carry by the utilities to be attached to their poles. And there's no, no anticipated changes in those expenses. And we do earn some revenue from the internet providers that are in that shelter using the network now. And we utilize the network cavity for our own purposes.
The power's gone down, Falconage?
I, because I said, it must be the credits, the solar grant. Yeah. And I'm looking at the most recent credit, it might be even more, but I didn't want, that was just extrapolating where we're at at this point, so.
Done, Jason.
Thank you.
Do you want to do the joint offices?
Sure.
Hi.
Offices.
Yeah, I knew we're doing it this, this year because I do all the purchasing for the city for all departments now. So when I first started this, I just pretty much did the clerk's office, but now I do all the purchasing for all departments. It makes it easier for finance, so. Everything, I just went through the budget and just adjusted it to what we had done from the previous year and what we've already spent for this year. Really wasn't much big of a difference. There was a slight increase in miscellaneous supplies. Yeah, postage, we, obviously the postage went out this year. So I increased that to what we need. And office equip, office equipment and maintenance, we, there was a printer purchased. So I just adjusted it to what we had spent, so, just in case something like that comes up again. Other than that, there wasn't really any significant change.
So everybody's nice to you, right? Could you purchase from?
No, quite the opposite.
So who?
Why is it not delivered? Amazon.
So which department give you the worst, worst? It's all right, no one's listening.
Yeah, well, Amazon's been a hard fight. Poor finances, gone through the wringer, but we figured it out, so.
Any questions for that?
Amazon. So I say we're, we're not done, whatever the fallout is going to be from that in terms of supplies, in the political situation, any other situations, so.
I do, recently, I have been doing some major searching to price match, like I've been going to make sure that we're getting the best price that we can get. And Amazon actually has not been winning that battle recently, so.
Who has?
Staples. They, I contacted them and they're, one of their agents has said, if you find a price that is higher than what we have, we'll make it lower. And so I have been using that recently. If I see something, that's what I do, I call them up and say, look, I found this item. There was more money on your site, this is what they're offering me, and they'll slash the price and they'll give it to me for the whole price, as long as I can prove it to them, obviously. Not going to be the honor system on their half.
So it sounds like for some departments, time is really an issue, they want the stuff quickly. And for you, you're looking at?
Yeah, there, there is quite a few issues with that sometimes, but that's out of our Yeah, there, there is quite a few issues with that sometimes, but that's out of our hands, out of our control. I order it in a timely manner, but getting it here has just been an issue. Like in shortage, like paper shortage. Where did that come from? Like I was like, I'm like, we need to order like.
This is strike.
Yeah, and there are some things that we could not get. I mean, I was fighting tooth and nail to get supplies for the city. It's been early lately.
Is there, are there other things that you consider, so timing, you probably want to choose vendors that can get it here a reasonable amount of time? And you're looking at costs as well, you're saying Amazon is no longer necessarily the cheapest. Are there other, are you looking at stuff that might be like made in Maine, gets it a couple more points in your head, or do you?
Local, like, I like using Full Circle, they're local, for like, our printing needs for like the advertising for our envelope, I mean, the envelopes, like the printing of our envelopes. Like instead of ordering that out to like Amazon or Staples, I use Full Circle. Whenever we can get through them, I do try my best to get through our local services.
Cool.
Absolutely. And they're fantastic, Full Circle, always timely, great to work with, business cards, stuff like that.
Yeah, it looks good.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Since you're up here, why don't you just get right into your GA?
Okay.
We're going to the tab five. Your purple, it should be purpleish-blue tab.
Oh, yeah.
So it's been a rough year for GA. You'll see I have some significant changes. Starting out, payroll, I am requesting that the general assistant's position switch from a part-time position to a full-time position. I have been spending majority of my time with general assistants, 90% of my time, honestly. My caseload has tripled in the past few years, the city's growing, the need is definitely there. I want to make sure that our citizens are getting the best that they can receive for help, you know? Want to make sure everybody is able to get their needs fulfilled from the city if there is help that's needed. I've been currently, my caseload's so high that I've actually been using another town and a nonprofit agency to try and help with my caseload. And I feel that's not the best route to take, only because I feel that the services should be all in-house and I should be the one to make those decisions or to speak with the client. That's just a way to make sure that the help is done properly. The next one is, do you guys have any questions on that part before I go to the next?
Just, just a general comment, not everybody understands GA. GA is a state program that municipalities are required to participate in, and there's a, there's a cost sharing from the state to the municipalities.
That is correct. So the city receives 70% back of what we spend from the state. Well, certain line items, obviously. Like are, there are certain items in here that are strictly city, like office equipment and the small stuff like that, my payroll. But the rest of it will be a 70% back from the state. And it is a mandatory program from the state that the municipality has.
When you said you were using other towns to help, do you mean administratively or to?
I have asked another town, a general admin, actually, I believe it's their town manager, I think, to help me in assisting with my general assistance workload. They've all been wonderful, I haven't, I mean, with trying to help out, so. And I will have to admit that with me using the nonprofit agency, we've been able to partner, so we've been able to help these clients navigate easier. Like finding jobs, finding housing, working together as one, trying to get them the help they need has definitely eased the workload on me. And lately, my, the clients have been finding jobs and finding permanent housing, and it's definitely been huge help being able to work with some of the local agencies together, so. Okay, so moving on. I have an increase. I don't have my comparison sheet, do you have that? I have that one, but from the year before, I have 2425. Oh wait, actually, I have it.
Do you have it? I don't have it.
No, I don't have it. I have it in my, I have it in memory, so.
Well, it's in your narrative too, what your changes are.
Okay, so my housing budget, I've had to increase. At that time, I increased it by 10,000. I since then have done a year-to-date budget sheet to see where I was at on how much I've spent recently. And I'm at, I'm a little over 11,000 over budget right now for the housing part of it. I didn't know if we wanted to adjust that, but currently I did a $10,000 increase for housing.
So just on that, if you can kind of give some data, watch it over as you get into May, June, to see if there's any kind of a spike. Because April is going to be the, well, I think it's actually the end of this month, the end of the emergency rent relief program. And where the state had extended that, so that's coming to a close. And I expect that that may bubble over into GA requests. So if, just that snapshot might be helpful, if you start seeing a big spike early, it would be helpful to, to have that discussion here, because that may need to be addressed.
Absolutely, yeah, I definitely will. And I've been working with DCP also with that specific part of it. And honestly, I have concerns about that department too, where they are so short-staffed that they're actually not able to process their applications that fast. So they actually have been overflowing into the city now, and I think you're right, it's probably might have a little bit of a special soon, so. Okay, so I had, continue on. I have a small increase in my miscellaneous budget. I have made an arrangement with the YMCA with like shower vouchers and stuff like that. And I, there, it's a $5 voucher for anybody to go up there to take a shower. So the library has them, they seem to be having a significant amount of homeless people come in and ask them for assistance. And they can give them a shower voucher and they can go up to the Y and take a shower and get some needs met. Like also up to our community closet and grab some clothes. And I've also talked to them, like if they needed a voucher, like a $10 voucher to go up there and get some clothing, stuff like that. And bus tickets, cab rides, that just stuff I have done in the past, it's just, seems to be significantly more expensive now with every, all the rate increases. Same thing with the housing budget, that was also a big significant change, like rent is through the roof. Like you can't find a $700 rent anymore, it's like 1,200, 1,300. That's average right now. And I've been able to do hotel stays in the past, general assistance has not allowed that. But since COVID and the huge homeless situation, the state has changed the ordinance to allowing municipalities to pay for hotel stays.
Is that permanent or will that sunset at some point?
Honestly, at this point, I don't know, but it's been that way for the past two years now, so, and I don't foresee it changing anytime soon. And let's see here, I had a decrease in my training budget. Because I actually am the one that does the training for the state, so I don't need to go to the trainings. I think that was it, all the changes. Oh, sorry, filing cabinets, thanks. Yes, I've asked for office, $500 in office equipment, because I'd like to have three locking file cabinets, because I've run out of room for all my client folders currently. And I'd like for them to be locked due to confidentiality, so. And that's it. I also, to throw it in there, I also have two accounts that I deal with, like the heating fund and the emergency assistance fund, which they're doing pretty good right now. So we're on, we're on track to be able to help with like the Christmas for kids and like the backpacks for kids. And my heating fund is doing pretty well, we have some pretty good outside people who will donate to that fund, so. Actually have a gentleman that every month sends me a check, just like clockwork, appreciate that. Any questions on that?
I have a question, perhaps I am missing something in my book, or I am blind?
Okay.
One of the two. Because I, I don't see what I'm seeing up there.
Section five, Councilor Howland, it's like a, should be like a purple-blue colored tab.
It's a don't tab.
Yeah, how many pages do you guys have?
Should just be three pages.
Three, uh, four.
Are you, you're missing the cover sheet, is that the one you missed?
Well, I'm not sure, I just don't see the difference in the budgets, the narrative doesn't line up with what I have in front.
Well, the cover sheet's missing FY 2023.
Oh, it says 25 instead of 25.
Yeah, that's what I asked in the beginning, I said, I don't see the compare to, so I had missed that, so I would have to put that in there.
Okay, all right, I got, I got you. I got you.
Sorry about that.
I'm not seeing what I think I'm seeing up there, I. So if you could just say to me that I don't have, what's the overall increase or decrease that's right there?
Over last year. So on the screen now is Tina's GA last year, which only encompassed a portion of her salary. And the request last year is for 55,000.
So is there a percentage increase, or is it not done?
It's, I haven't done it because I didn't transpose it over, but it's probably 45%.
Okay, because all I see is the same number from 2425.
I'll adjust that and then I'll have new copies for Monday night.
Yeah, that's, that's fine.
All right.
Okay.
Well, we're gonna have facilities go, but I don't.
He's got his own section.
Yeah, he's got his own section, so.
We gotta go back to insurance.
Yeah, we'll go back after Jim though.
Had you known when everybody was gonna leave, you would have gone first.
Yeah, they stuffed me in the attic, so it used to be.
Have a good night, guys.
Thank you.
So we're gonna skip to section nine in your book.
So six months flying under the radar and now twice in one week.
Good evening. All right, so I'll start right off the top. Payroll is, payroll is just me. Power budget, well, I've asked for a decrease in the power, power line based on looking at our power bills, going through solar, what we've spent to date when I prepared the budget back in January. You know, I don't think we need to budget the amount that was budgeted this current year for next year, so I asked for that decrease, causing a savings. Water budget, after looking at some of the bills, the budget's been overspent. So I'm asking for an increase in that line from 31 to 43,000, 100, excuse me. The training line, hasn't, nothing been spent, I'm relatively, as I said in the narrative here, I'm relatively new and I may come across something that I think would be a benefit to the city going forward, so I request to keep that the same. Miscellaneous supplies, paper products, we purchased paper products through that for the entire city, fire department, police department, city hall, all the expendables plus light bulbs, whatever you can think of, parts, pieces comes out of that. Also, when I do paint, maintenance, repair items, products for that come out of that line. Cleaning supplies, so I'm requesting that stay the same. Vehicle maintenance, as you can see, I dropped that because, you know, we did a big rush repair on the vehicle, bought some new tires for it this year. I don't think we need to budget $4,000 again for the van, so I cut that in half. I can't foresee anything, I mean, it's an '08, but it's only got 38,000 miles, I can't foresee anything major going wrong with it. Building maintenance line, as you can see, that went up, that also encompasses the janitorial service in that line. I've been, as I put in the narrative, I've been plugging away at the MMA inspection deficiencies. As of late, I've been concentrating on some of the bigger deficiencies, i.e. the cupola. And vehicle fuel, again, that's, that line went up. I've been tasked with kind of looking after different properties throughout the city, where my predecessor was basically, I guess, just here. So he didn't use it much, I use it a little bit more, I'm averaging about a tank a month right now, so I asked for an increase there. The heat line, I'd like to make a change there and cut that to 20,000 instead of 24. Reason for that is we have a very good working relationship with the current contractor and I keep in touch with him. He, he calls me and we identify whenever there's a price drop, so right now I talked to him last week, I think it was. We locked in this past year for this current heating system at 369 a gallon, right now he's under 3, which at our current expenditure would be a $4,000 savings, you know, we pumped just for city hall. I have totals here, not counting the schools, to how much fuel we've gone through citywide. But just city hall is just shy of 5,500 gallons. So at roughly 70 cents a gallon savings, i.e. there's your $4,000, right now it's 20,000. As of March 10th, we've expended 20,232 dollars, 20,232 dollars, excuse me, 20,000, yeah, 232, I missed, I miswrote it down. At 5,483 gallons, so that same amount with a 65 cent savings would be 16,449. So he thinks it's gonna go down even more, we agreed to lock in again once the market starts to creep up, but right now he's under $3 a gallon, so that relationship's paying off for the city.
I think the biggest savings comes from former, that former counselor Blanchett isn't here. I think the biggest savings comes from former, that former counselor Blanchett isn't here, turning up the heat every two seconds.
Oh, that too.
I hope he's listening.
Uniforms, I asked to keep that the same. You know, I was able to purchase some shirts when I first started, but, you know, I'll need to probably in the spring buy some different set of safety boots and things like that, T-shirts. That's it. I know I went through it kind of quick, but questions?
Did I understand you to say that the city hall burned fifty-five hundred gallons?
C-five-hundred.
Roughly, so that's a hundred and six gallons. I understood you right, that's a hundred and six gallons a week average, which is far less than what I expected.
City hall. Fifty-four hundred and eighty-three gallons. For the year-to-date, as of three-ten.
Reasonable for this. I realize that you don't use it in the summer, but if I did that right, it's a hundred and six gallons a week. Just seems reasonable for this, this building.
I wouldn't say this building is the most energy efficient building. You know, you have a fire department that's opening and closing the doors multiple times a day. You know, when we get down to when it's around zero, that doesn't take long. Really, people aren't messing with the thermostats. Most of them have lock boxes on them. A lot of times, people are complaining that it's, you know, some of the staff complains that different areas of the building are cold, that sort of thing, but yeah, it is a lot of oil.
I, I just find that reasonable.
Yeah, citywide, not counting the school, we pumped sixteen thousand, six hundred and four gallons of oil. Not counting the school system, they, I didn't.
I realize it's still a big cost, but that just seems reasonable.
Yeah, we pumped fifty-three hundred and fifty gallons of propane, citywide, not counting the school.
Has there been any talk about changing from oil furnace to, say, heat pumps, especially with the solar credits making?
We have not had any discussion. I've not even actually looked into it. We do have several heat pump systems. We're in the process now of installing a three-head unit down in the fire department and sleeping quarters for the captain's office slash bedroom and two of the firefighters to help, A, offset heat, B, with the mold and then air quality issues that have been going on down there, because there's just no ventilation, there's no air movement, that sort of thing, and they're below, they're below grade, so.
And we need to replace the windows.
No, we need to replace the windows, but that's three-twenty-nine meeting. That's the Capitol meeting, and you guys are really gonna hate me.
See?
There's not gonna be any.
See, you get started and then you stop, right?
I did, I did good, I, I cut the budget a little bit, but, you know, I'm gonna like kill it, come, you know, break donuts and flowers and stuff. Are we doing the miscellaneous property tonight also?
There's no changes, oh, there's only one change, more property.
Uh, that was what we were gonna discuss later and.
Yeah, we'll come back to that one.
Come back to that one and find out, because that's, again, mostly power. Thank you. Okay. Man, that was easy.
We just started.
Yeah, don't. Oh, yeah, I know, you're saving up for capital.
We've got plenty, plenty of time, we'll bring you back.
If we go back to administrative in the back, there's a couple that we skipped. It'll be done for tonight, it took longer than I thought.
So, insurance.
Insurance, yep.
So, most of this is not up to us, this is just what the bills are. I looked at the current bills, some, because our, our bills will then kind of carry half fiscal year, then they increase in January as most things, so best estimates that I could do based on what we're currently paying and small change.
Not bad. Insurances don't bad.
And by insurances, this is just property casualty insurance, this isn't benefit insurance.
Yeah, this isn't workers' comp or health insurance, this is just property and casualty.
That's the next page.
Yes. Oh, you're jumping ahead. Ambulance, medical malpractice, is that directly related to the recent episode of ambulance, or is?
No, that's what we have now, just with our EMTs on scene. I do suspect that will increase if we change licensure, but I have probably no way to estimate that. I can reach out to M.A. Municipal and see if they could give me a better estimate, but that will probably go up if we go that route, you know, to get that full licensure.
Employee benefits.
So, again, many of these are relatively out of our control. This is our FICA taxes, insurance, retirement, matching funds that we provide, unemployment, workers' compensation, and employee cost of living increases are in this line. Our main state retirement, the second item on that list is an increase over last year. Part of that is due to, in the last set of union negotiations, we changed our plan to a more attractive retirement plan for police and fire, which came with a higher percentage contribution from the city. Workers' compensation.
And the employee.
And the employee, yeah, they, they both pay higher. Workers' compensation, I haven't really changed. We had our audit done about a year and a half ago, and everything is kind of staying the same, so I expect that to stay the same. And ICMA retirement, I expect to stay the same. We haven't had high influx in enrollment changes there. The same with our cafeteria plan, which is our points-based system for city-sponsored. We have, you know, fitness reimbursement and medical services that we fund are, are out of our own account. And RHS is retirement health savings. We have unions that have this particular type of retirement plan built into their contract. So, there's an increase there due to some percentage increases in the, in the union contracts. And the group dynamics is our flex account for our health insurance. When you enroll in a health insurance, you get a flex account through group dynamic. The two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars is actually only half of what the current slate of employees are entitled to, but having this plan, we only budget for half of that. That's about what we spend in the course of a year.
Depending on what employees use or use.
Right, so if you have family coverage, you get six thousand dollars. Some unions get a little more than that. Most, most employees spend maybe half of that or less, so we kind of budget based on actual expense, not what you're entitled to potentially spend.
Is that administered by a third party?
It is.
The increase in health insurance over the years, is that, is that due to plan design changes, or is that just due to the health insurance costs going up and?
Health insurance costs going up. The first two years of Co- of COVID, they were able to keep the percentage the same, those first two years, and then last year, we saw just over a nine percent increase in January. And their trustees haven't met yet, I don't think, to determine the upcoming January rates, so I'm just kind of ballparking another nine percent-ish change come January.
We took, I mean, we took a pretty big jump last year in the higher quality benefit packages, had little to no increase, so hopefully this year.
Flip-flop at me then.
Will take little to none and those guys will get hit pretty hard. And the only other budget is miscellaneous.
Could I just ask one question about that? There's approximately a hundred employees.
Yes.
Am I in favor of that? Okay, so that, that to me, I, I don't know that there's something manageable here, but the health insurance, are we roped into where you're getting it now?
No, it's not contracted.
The unions decide what each, what percentage each person pays, right? Each union has, it's the same policy, it's just.
Correct.
The, the union can, whatever's negotiated is a percentage.
Correct.
Just, you know, rough numbers here, if we've got a hundred employees, our cost has gone up eighty-one dollars and thirty-four cents per week per employee. It's quite a, quite an increase.
And the, so the, the employees incur, when, when we have a rate increase, the employees incur a pretty significant portion of that rate increase.
Which is even sadder, right? I mean, that's.
Because our police, fire, highway, they're all into the mid, below twenty percent that they pay a weekly, weekly towards their.
Twenty percent of the premium.
Correct, yeah.
Right, so.
The, the plan, I'm familiar with several plans, including this one, if the city did look at different, it is, is, I believe, is probably the most competitive plan, that if you went to outside of the trust, because the, the trust is through the MMA, right?
M.A. Municipal.
And so, the municipalities across the state, that, compared to the traditional vendors, they, they would charge much more, very high premiums and probably force the city to go in a direction that wouldn't be favorable for, for employees, because the cost just gets, the increases there are, when you see a nine percent here, you're seeing double digits, fifteen to twenty percent in the commercial market, so I do think it's probably a fairly good deal, but if, there may be some information, better information, so that you, kind of, just so you get a question answered.
Yeah, it just seems that if, if, if the city's portion is eighty-one dollars and thirty-four cents per employee per week, the employee is getting hammered here. If you're saying that that's a roughly eighty percent number, so the employee is getting hammered as well in this process.
I think most of our union employees are paying eighty to a hundred dollars a week.
It comes hard.
If they have, yeah, if they have the family plan.
Right.
They have the single, they're much, much.
It's probably twelve, on a rough numbers, I mean, this varies for every employer, but it's eleven to twelve thousand dollars that.
Yes.
On the employer, in this case, the city side, and then the employees paying on top of that, and that's, that's not a typical, it's just that the health insurance is just, it's unbelievable right now. It's almost impossible to, to get something that's, that's affordable. Where you get the offset is the plan design, which a few years back, we did, as a city, change that to, to be able to provide, it's, everybody's got a different situation. You know, if you're not using it, it's a good value. If you have to use it, it's less cost based on some of the deductibles. So, it might be interesting to have MMA do a presentation for all of the counselors.
You're gonna get one. It's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be after, outside of budget, because it's now something we're gonna try to work into this budget cycle, but Kerry's already done a lot of the homework and a lot of the math to potentially speak to the council about bringing back the POSC, which is the insurance we used to have for employees who choose it. We can actually carry, you can carry up to three different health insur- through the trust, you can carry up to three different health insurance plans. Currently, we only offer one across the board, so Kerry has some ideas, HR, about how we can maybe expand that and potentially offer, because it's, to your point, it's different for different people. Like the young, you know, the young twenty-seven-year-old police officer firefighter, you know, highway worker that doesn't have a family, doesn't have, the PO, the PPO twenty-five hundred is fantastic for them, because they're paying less out-of-pocket for, or less weekly for their share, and their out-of-pocket expenses are minimal, because they don't have a lot of health issues, they don't have a lot of medications. When you, and in turn, it's a savings for the city, because that three thousand dollar HRA, they're not using. When you get your older employees who ha- and particularly those with families, they're expending their HRA quickly, like in the first few months of the calendar year, then their out-of-pocket expenses are going through the roof, and so for that employee, the PPO twenty-five hundred is a hardship. The POSC for that employee would cost them more upfront on a weekly basis in order to keep the city whole. They wouldn't have the HRA, but now they'd have, they wouldn't have the out-of-pocket expense that they're kept carrying with the PPO twenty-five hundred, so. There's a lot more that work to be done on that, but it's definitely something that, as the city moves forward, that we'll be looking at possibly addressing.
I think it's a problem for everybody, private industry and, you know, doesn't matter where, it's, it's a, it's a problem. Looking at this budget, just for health insurance, that's a thousand bucks a month per employee. That's just the city portion, that's pretty, pretty tough. Especially if that's roughly eighty percent, so the employee's picking up twenty. And what you do about it, I don't know, but it just seems like that's quite a, quite a hit.
I think that's it for tonight.
We have one more, sorry. Miscellaneous.
It's a simple.
It's, it's our annual dues for the shellfish group and for M.A. Municipal.
At some point, I do want to talk about getting out of, but.
What, the shellfish?
Yes.
What is, what, what is that?
This, the Frenchman's Bay Regional Shellfish Commission, which we used to be the.
Fiscal agent for.
The agent for. Now Franklin is the agent for all those commercial shellfish licenses, and so we pay into it to help administer that program.
So that the five plant figures who reside in Ellsworth can get their license. So, if we pull out, they can't go to those six, what would be six towns then and, and purchase a license. They can, but it, it, it's a different type of license, so.
Wasn't there eight employees? Well, when it was voted on, wasn't there eight, because there were five?
Last year, there may have been eight, yeah. I, I was just being facetious, because it's, it's a very small number anyway. So.
It's something that would pay back if there were a bunch of harvesters using it, buying license?
Yeah, I mean, if we had, I mean, the weeds pay the same three thousand dollars, whether we have one harvester or six hundred and fifty, it doesn't, it's not per capita, it doesn't have anything to do with the number of individuals, it's just a flat fee.
Thank you for paring off.
So organized, yeah, thanks for keeping us color-coded and numbered notes.
So, what we'll do is we'll go and make the identified errors, corrections, changes, and then on Monday, when we get together for the next workshop, we'll have, before the workshop begins, we'll have everyone pull out the old tabs and we'll give you the new ones to put in, so that everyone's keeping up with the accuracy of their budget book, so. Thank you.
Thanks.